Good evening and welcome to the February 18th, 2025 council meeting. My right piece of paper here. Please note that all council members are present. And I would like to turn the time over to Vice Chair Hayer to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise if you're able and prepare for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a moment of silence. Thank you. Next on our agenda is acknowledgements. Are there any acknowledgements, council members? Yeah, sure.
Last night onstage Ogden brought an amazing event from Baile Folklorico, which is a Mexican performing group that came from Mexico City. And it was in the Austed Auditorium at Weber State. The theater was packed and there's nothing funner than to be with that culture, celebrating their culture and watching that baile folklorico. And if you have never heard of that before, this is the premier traveling. I didn't know they were traveling, but it's one of the premier performing groups in all of Mexico. Just incredibly renowned and to have them here in Ogden was just amazing. So just celebrate their accomplishments. Thanks.
Great, that's awesome.
Chair, may I make a comment? I just wanted to acknowledge, I know that there was a memorial service for her this weekend, but a wonderful member of our community, Julia Allrich. I actually used to see her quite often when I was walking my dogs over by the Golden Hour Center. But so many people reached out to me this past couple of weeks with her tragic passing, just telling me how much they appreciated her so much and then asked how they could donate and it's from Marshall White and her name. So I just really wanted to acknowledge her and just the wonderful community member that she was helping to teach, you know, the ceramics and pottery classes at the center. But also I know she visited our meetings a couple of times to advocate for the center and just a really great person, so I just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, next on our agenda is a request to be on the agenda. It is a follow-up with the Weber Housing Authority project. And I'd like to turn some time over to Mayor Nadolsky. We about a month ago asked administration to come to us with some, I don't know, just other options. And so I think the mayor is going to give us the list of options that we've, that you have.
Thank you, Chair. And I did commit to do some work and I'm happy to share the efforts of the work. I see Andy Beedles here today. As luck would have it, I had committed to do some things, but they helped by organizing a meeting with me. I think the board chair was there, Andy was there, county commissioner was there, some other staff maybe from the county as well. Anyway, they said, Mayor, we feel like we need to provide a few options moving forward for your consideration. One was to make things work at the current site. We talked about some of the complications with that, with the funding sources and some of the requirements to go with it. Another option was to evaluate options or opportunities for us to make the Housing Authority whole on the expenditures that have been made and also to help make sure that the grants are not lost, that they've been able to secure. The third option was to transfer the project to another organization and go around the statute. But my response was that the third option was a hostile option. It's not an option that they wanted to go either. They're just really looking for speed and efficiency and some options and alternatives. So we've evaluated the current site, obviously you guys have as well. I don't think I need to provide any more input on that. I think you guys have done a really thorough job on evaluating that option. We've looked at securing an appraiser and getting an appraisal for the value of the property. We've looked at funding opportunities or options that we might have. There are some options there as well. We, with the idea being to relocate the project to a more acceptable location, preferably in another city in the county, at least for me. But we've done a lot of homework. We think there are a lot of options for the council to consider. I don't know. I will look to you, Chair, for some guidance on the direction the council wishes to go. But the administration's done quite a bit of work to evaluate our options. I've also spoken with staff at the state level, along with the county, to evaluate or to assess if there's ways to make the grants that they've been awarded work at another location. And I've been assured that there are options there. The key to making any and all of the options work is to make sure that we work together. If we are on different pages, it's probably going to be pretty messy. So if we can arrive at or get some clarity from the council moving forward, I'd like to move forward on an option as soon as possible.
So just to clarify, this is the first time we're hearing of all these options. I don't, so thank you for that. And it sounds like there's quite a few that you have been discussing with the county and the state. Any questions for the mayor, just off the top of anyone's head? I think one of the things that would be probably our next step is to actually sit down in a public forum or a work session and talk about what you have found. But that's just what I would think the next step would be.
And I was just going to say, because we were just discussing in the work session, you know, I didn't know if it would ever come back to the council for a decision if it's not going to be in Ogden City. That was the only reason it was coming to the council. And my understanding was because Weber Housing Authority was working in our city limits, it had to come to this governing body. So that was just a question. And Janine clarified that she thought it would have to come back to us. But, you know, I don't know how that fits in with the discussion about the other options.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, happy to clarify. So if it were relocated in another city, certainly you guys wouldn't have to make a decision on land use. But if we were to be a partner to help with the buyout, to make sure that the grants remain whole, to make sure that the Weber Housing Authority remains whole. To me, and I've said this to others, and I think it would, it would be, I don't think it would be in anybody's best interest if the answer was just no. And so if that's the direction the council is going, I think it's really important that we evaluate alternatives to make sure that the Housing Authority lands on its feet, that they do achieve success, that we do house people for the long term, somewhere, somehow, in a way that works with the land use and the policies that we've been working toward for well over a decade. I think we have tens of millions of dollars invested in neighborhood stabilization in that area. So if that's the direction the council wishes to go, we can provide some options for your consideration from a budget opening standpoint or a real estate purchase standpoint.
And Chair White, just for communication's sake, it might be good if we set another date, let's say a month from now, March 18th, just again to follow up, get a report to see where everyone's at, if you're open to that.
I'm certainly open to that. It sounds like though that you would like to discuss, at least I'm hearing, that you would like to discuss that maybe all the options and give us and lay it out for us. Is that what you'd rather?
That'd be good. And if we could just accelerate the timeline on behalf of the Housing Authority and the county and the state, I think that's been really the driver when I've had the discussions with other parties is whatever you decide, just do it quick. And so that's, if you guys could help on that end from a, when you decide to agendize, how you decide procedurally or from a process standpoint. At a minimum, if we can give a signal back to Andy and their team so they know the direction that we're going, the sooner the better. And we can do the same with our partners at the state level and start to have that kind of communication to make sure everybody knows at least the direction we're going.
So I agree, let's at least set something as far as a communication up as a definite and then work towards maybe something sooner if we can, if a work session or something in the next couple of weeks maybe or something.
Yeah, we can do a follow-up in a work session.
I know that we don't have a council meeting next week, so that's what I'm just.
I just wondered if what the mayor was talking about could all happen within the next month and there might be actions that could be taken on the 18th.
I don't know, because I am looking to you, I don't know all the options. I just, I was just writing them down as you were saying.
Yep, you have my commitment to make it happen as fast as possible on my end. I think a month ought to be plenty, but I worry that's too long for Andy.
Yeah, that's why I'm concerned too. Sorry to interrupt.
You're good. I think we're on the same page as what you're about to say.
Yeah.
They have a grant for $590,000, which is an ARPA-related grant. They have by the end of June to spend it. There could be possibility, working with the legislature in the final two weeks, to get a non-lapsing language that extends potentially. It's not within my authority, but if that's an option as well, it would always help if we go in lock and step and make that request. But we would have to know when talking with the legislature that there's a pathway that we're pursuing to give them comfort on why they would do that.
I just have a follow-up question, this for clarity. So do you think, I mean, what it sounds to me like if we're discussing budgetary issues, maybe purchasing property, would that be a closed session or would that be an open session? That is a question just for the public to understand.
Certainly if it's a budgetary item, that would be an open work session.
Chair, and I just, my question was then is, so as you met, mayors, you met with the Housing Authority, the county and the state, was there a proposal that everyone felt like they sort of, or a pathway that everyone coalesced around? Or was there, you know, you mentioned several options. I'm just curious if there was one that you felt like was the most appealing.
Well, I don't want to speak for them, but I think we all coalesced around not just saying no. I think that's pretty firm. If we, I'm sure that they prefer that we move forward with the current location. That's why it's being proposed. But I think that, I have to think they would prefer that we work down the road of buying the property from them to make them whole, to make the state whole, et cetera, over just saying no. But I don't want to speak for the Housing Authority, it's not my.
Right.
I think the only other thing I would say too, because I apologize, I wasn't here for the last time you all talked about this, but I guess I'm concerned because I know the workaround way means that the Housing Authority wouldn't necessarily have their offices there, wouldn't be running the community programming. So that's my only other fear. It's not that I don't trust that other organization that might do it, but I am worried that they wouldn't have the same level of support in the community there, you know? One of the challenges.
The workaround being having another, a third party?
Yeah.
Take it and circumvent state law, right? Yeah, that's a consideration.
That just worries me. So I think that's the compelling piece is that it has so much support with the Weber Housing Authority. At the helm, you know, they've agreed to have their offices there. They agreed to allocate part of their budget to help run community programming of some sort. And the programming that they were going to have full-time for the residents that are there is a very different level of support for that particular block than if another agency does it and doesn't have those things.
I guess what I'd like to maybe propose then is to reevaluate this on, at least a next update on March 18th. And in the meantime, maybe there's something that we can get on the schedule beforehand if something. Again, this is the first time, basically, we're kind of all hearing about the options that you've been working with, so if that sounds okay to you.
So we'll know later then, and if we can move quicker potentially, you could entertain that. Okay, that's important to me and I think to everybody, to make sure that we're not delaying any more than we have.
So there's no action that we would need to take just as a.
Well, here's my thought process is that two weeks is not enough time to get any action documents ready. We could go three weeks, but by, in a month, we might, you could possibly have some actions in place for the council to consider if they're proposing. So that was just my thought process in recommending the 18th. But we could certainly do it the 11th.
Does that sound okay? Is that, at least an update on the 11th, I think would be better. Okay.
So maybe we could recommend an update in the work session on the 11th with possible action on the 18th.
Unless we're ready on the 4th?
Unless you're ready on the 4th.
For update. I don't either. I'd have to, we'll have to see.
I think that's what, yeah.
Oh, noticing requirements, I hadn't thought of that. Yeah, gotcha.
Okay.
So update on the, in the work session on March 11th and possible action on March 18th, depending on what the updates are.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is, the item on our agenda is the Lotus Company and the CityWalk fire recognitions. And I don't know, I saw, yeah, there you go. I assume you're Brian?
No, Jim McQueen.
Sorry, Jim.
And I'm here with my associate Angie Clark from our development side. And but we are here on behalf of Lotus Company and Brian Wrigley to express our appreciation to the city council, the mayor, and all the units that were involved on January 25th on the tragic fire of our CityWalk project. I was actually up here that night and it was quite a sight. And the professionalism of everyone involved was greatly appreciated, very calming. And it's a very emotional event for us. We had seven months into the project and we're working very diligently to get the project up and running again and get it back to where it's going to be to provide the affordable housing for the community. But Brian very strongly felt that we should come up and offer some appreciation plaques to those who were involved. And of course, the first was the mayor. Mayor, we very much appreciate your efforts and everything you did on behalf. I want to say that all the units of the city or many of the units have reached out to us and are trying to help us get back on track and we really do appreciate that. The second would be Fire Chief Mathau. Yes, thank you so much. The people were great, they are, they were. I guess Lucky was right across from the fire station, so it made it easier. But yeah, they were wonderful that night. Next, we'd like to recognize Police Chief Soupy. You guys were great, I really appreciate your team. And last but not least, we want to recognize the ATF Special Agent Olson. So that's really what we wanted to say and just again, appreciation to everyone here and to let you know that, you know, although it was difficult time, we're very excited about getting everything back on track and continuing to work with the city of Ogden on many more projects into the future. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Brian, and thanks for all you're doing here in Ogden.
Thank you.
Your organization's doing a lot of good work.
Ogden means a lot to us and we have several projects coming online, as you know. And we love the history, we love the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I called Brian again, I'm sorry, Jim.
It's Jim. I'll tell Brian.
I know, I called you that again, I'm sorry.
Chair White?
Yes, please.
Would you allow just a moment of privilege? This is actually my first structured fire I was at onsite as mayor. And why was it ever a fire? But the recognition to fire, to the support from police, just really admirable. The men and women of both departments were incredible. I have no idea how fire was able to contain it, really. I just don't know how they pulled it off, but I'm sure thankful they did. But what goes most unseen in the case of a fire, and I can say this, having been on scene during the event, is that there was immediate support from our Public Services Department. They showed up, Gage showed up without even being called. He showed up and said, what do you need, chief? And he was there to help. They spread salt on standing water to make sure that our firefighters don't slip and, you know, standing on ice, et cetera. They helped with road closures, they helped with facilitating between all of the utilities that were called out in an emergency to make sure they shut down power, et cetera. They helped to make sure that neighbors were notified. It was just a huge effort. So Justin Anderson, if you don't mind coming up for me, I want to share this with your department, if that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you, that was, I think we could feel the heat all the way through the city, so. And to think that that went on and yet no one was injured and that was a very, not just even a slip and fall that day, so that was amazing. Well, at least I don't think so. All right, on to the next. We have a recognition of one of our seasoned planning commissioners. So turn the time over to Vice Chair Hayer.
Thank you, Chair White. It is my pleasure to recognize Kathy Blaisdell. She and I served together for many years and she served for many years after I was gone. She is one of the veterans of the Planning Commission. I, you, maybe you're second in tenure length, I believe. I don't think there's anybody, there's one other that maybe served longer on the Planning Commission than Kathy. But she was, I remember, and I'm going to tell you some little personal anecdotes. When she got appointed to the Planning Commission, she went and started taking classes in planning at Weber State so that she knew what the heck she was doing. Most of the rest of us just kind of learned on the job, but she was not willing to wait that long and just embarked on, and she did a great job the whole time she was there. Her personality lended to very good chemistry on the Planning Commission and she will certainly be missed. But I'd like to read this recognition now if I can. I might have missed up a little bit because Kathy has become a very close friend. So, "The Ogden City Council and Mayor proudly recognize Kathy Blaisdell for her invaluable service on the Ogden City Planning Commission. Kathy Blaisdell's journey with the Ogden City Planning Commission began more than 20 years ago. Throughout her tenure, she served with dignity and honor, consistently leading by example and demonstrating a passion for Ogden City and its residents. With integrity, professionalism, and genuine desire to improve the community, Kathy has played a vital role in shaping the city's growth while preserving its unique character. Kathy's commitment to her role was evident in her thorough preparation for meetings, active participation in pre-meeting tours, and involvement in planning open houses and APA conferences. She consistently emphasized with residents, giving a voice to their concerns and ensuring they felt heard. Her wisdom and expertise were instrumental in asking thoughtful questions, addressing issues proactively, and making informed decisions that helped guide Ogden's development. As Kathy retires from the Planning Commission, we honor her service and dedication to the Ogden community. Her passion, professionalism, and genuine care for Ogden's future have left a lasting legacy. Her contributions will be remembered for years to come and we wish her the best in her future endeavors." This is presented this 18th day of February 2025. There are several planning, there are a few planning commissioners, there's some planning staff and other support group that came along. Why don't we have you all come up for the photo?
You want me to talk?
We do.
Thank you so much for the opportunity I have had since 2002. Mayor Godfrey called me on the phone and asked me if I would like to be on the Planning Commission and I said, what is the Planning Commission and what does it do? So, so yes, Rich is right, that I've started taking classes at Weber State and it has been a wonderful, wonderful experience to work with the city leaders and mostly for the citizens of the city. Because I figured out that we, the Planning Commission, the city council, might be the only face of Ogden City that they ever interact with. And so it was important for me to do that job well and be empathetic and understand and listen and then move on from there. So whatever happened, thank you so much.
Thanks, Kathy.
And I appreciate all of you and my family and thank you, Ogden City, all of you.
Thank you, Kathy, for all you've done.
Chair, yeah, just Kathy, thank you, congratulations. For everybody in the room, that's 23 years of volunteer service on the Planning Commission and that's a big commitment. And she took it seriously. I had the opportunity, the pleasure to serve with Kathy for eight years on the Planning Commission and to take it up and go to classes at Weber State University. University in land use, urban land use planning, was, really spoke to her commitment and her role on the Planning Commission. Her experience and her knowledge and her preparation always showed. She was willing to share and teach those of us that were newer on it, and she always brought a sparkling smile to every meeting and a positive attitude. So thanks for all that.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Chair, if I can just also mention, when we moved to the area 26 years ago, something like that, I think Kathy and Jim were the first, one of the first people that came over and said hello to us, because we lived just right around the corner. And so I've had that pleasure also of knowing Kathy for such a long time, and congratulations. And as awesome as she is and everything she does in her personal life, you know, I know that she was exceptional as a planning commissioner.
Don't make yourself a stranger.
Yeah. Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy. And Jim. Jim supported her the whole time, so.
Speaking of the Planning Commission, we have a report from the Planning Commission. Taylor, I think I, Taylor?
I'm here. I'm sharing my screen real quick.
There he is.
Hopefully that's being shared appropriately, and it looks like they're switching over. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with council tonight. I'm sorry that I am virtual. I'd much rather be in person. But I appreciate council staff allowing me this opportunity to still be able to present on the engineering standards tonight. So, as always, my name is Taylor Nielsen. I am the city engineer. If you guys have questions, please feel free to stop me and provide any input or ask any questions you guys would like. I want to make sure that there's nothing that we kind of have left as far as questions or concerns as we move forward with some of these presentation items. As part of the standards, every couple years, we come back and we reevaluate this. We try and do it in conjunction with the American Public Works Association standards. Those come out every couple years. They haven't had a new rendition that's come out in the past few years. So we had thought, as part of the engineering staff and some other members of the city, that it was time to make some updates to the standards. As such, we've proceeded, made a few changes. I'll present those changes here tonight, and happy to give as much or as little detail as you guys would like to hear about these. So with that, I'll jump into a couple of them. So this was the old 2020 edition that we had. It's been about five years. We've made some updates, including which of the cover. We're proud of some of the construction projects and other items we've been able to be a part of, and we always like showing off some of that work. The picture on the left, to date how long ago that was, was the second phase of the Grand Avenue promenade. The one on the right was the work that got done on 26th Street. And so you can see, we've been very busy in the downtown with a lot of our projects. One of the big items that we introduced as part of the engineering standards was the variance process, and the importance of making sure that we are able to have discussions on some of those areas. I know there's big items going on in the legislature, where there's questions of what happens if there's, you know, gray area in standards, or other questions or problems as we get into some of these design manuals. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to provide the appropriate pathway back through to have some of these design questions, considerations, provide a shortened timeframe. We didn't want someone to come in with a question and have it just be, you know, open-ended to whenever we could get back to them, but had a 15-business-day review. And then we tried to assign some criteria. We just didn't want everyone just to come in and request a variance for everything. We do feel like there are some standards that are necessary, and we need to make sure that the hardship or problem that it was causing was, you know, able to be sort of accommodated in a necessary function, but ensuring that we didn't risk safety or any sort of other requirements that kind of exist already on the books. Another one that we talked about were the implementation of traffic studies. We have been requiring traffic studies. What we wanted to do was provide some additional requirements for traffic studies. Sorry, was there a question?
No.
Okay. We wanted to make sure that as we were getting into traffic studies or other requirements, that we could say, generally, when this project comes in, instead of seeing a submittal or seeing a project come through, that we could let developers know, hey, when you're looking into these type of items, you know, such as, are you going to generate 100 or more vehicle trips per day? Are you going to have 50 or more dwelling units? Are you going to add 30,000 square feet of a building? We would be looking into doing a traffic study and evaluating the impact that you would be having on those areas. Now, there's still the ability to waive it if we feel like it's not needed, but generally, if it's coming in and it's on one of our busier streets, if it's on a UDOT road, traffic impact studies are required. So this was kind of to help make sure that there was just a better understanding that they would have to do it. So what do they normally do? They'll help us forecast typical future traffic. They'll try and compare them to what we have in current standards. So if you're out, for instance, traveling on Wall Avenue, we want to make sure that a new development doesn't make sure that you sit on Wall Avenue for three minutes and not move. So we like to ensure that traffic flows through Ogden. We've had that great presentation, the work session from Visit Ogden, about the great things that are happening. We want to make sure cars and vehicles and other modes of transportation are always able to get in and out of the city. We also try and identify potential safety hazards, and we always will recommend mitigations associated with changes, which might be installation of a traffic signal, addition of, you know, say, turn pockets, turn lanes, or other things of that nature that would come along with it. So what don't they do? They will never guarantee that more cars will drive on a street. They won't guarantee that there will never be any crashes, and it's very popular, they won't stop that one guy that drives really fast. So we just try and make sure that we, try and let everyone know that even though we have it, we also can't guarantee that your business will receive extra cars based on the traffic study. So we just try and do as best we can with our crystal ball to ensure that traffic flow and everything else is able to work. So this right here is a typical roadway standard that we have. This is shared in our standard books. Whenever we do new subdivisions, new streets, we have the measurement of street widths, different asphalt cross-sections. We came back as part of some of these revisions and made sure that everything that we had put in these standards meets the new street width and asphalt width requirements from the state legislature, trying to be consistent and make sure that we're showing people that we're good partners in moving forward with a lot of these items. The other thing that we're having happen, which is great in Ogden, is we're becoming very popular with broadband companies. And so we wanted to make sure that they understood if they're coming in and trying to occupy certain area under park strips or in the roadway, that we have havens that we want for our storm drain, for our sewer, for our water systems to kind of run in those avenues. And as we can do that, we ensure that we're protecting our infrastructure for the long term to come. There's one item, though, in that last picture that doesn't get accommodated, that we started including into our standards, that it was in downtown Ogden. So as part of the new public realm zones, and I've added that graphic on the screen, there are new different things where we talk about transition zones, sidewalk zones, and amenity zones as part of the Make Ogden Plan. So as part of that last graphic that we showed, that didn't have something that accommodated these different sections. And so we wanted to ensure that as we're working and installing stuff in the downtown, as we're seeing new development come in, that we were able to keep up with some of those requirements as part of the Make Ogden Plan, and ensure that we're able to still have the nice walkable areas and meet the intent and requirements of that plan. We did make some updates to some sewer standards. That is a picture of a sewer main on the right that is starting to experience some failure. And I will say, there's quite a few things that caused me to not sleep, but having a backed-up sewer is definitely one of them, to make sure that we can always, as we're putting in new projects, new construction, new details, that we're meeting the highest requirements and highest standards. One of them that we wanted to require was a new air test. And the reason why that's important is, we here at the city have tried to reduce the amount of inflow and infiltration into our sewer systems. So what we'll do is, we'll install a sewer main, we'll go in, we'll basically plug both ends, and we'll pump it up to a certain pressure, and make sure that it doesn't lose that pressure, which indicates that that has kind of become airtight. So then we'll connect sewer laterals and other items to it, but we're trying to prevent any sort of groundwater, anything else, from getting into the sewer main, and otherwise kind of increasing some of that carrying capacity and the ultimate outflow that would eventually end up down at the sewer district. The other item we've done is, we've clarified details for sewer cleanouts. And we thought this was important, especially with new projects that we've done. As we've gone through and done new road projects, we've ensured that we have sewer cleanouts to help for easier use and maintenance of projects and people's laterals as they're coming in. So I know as we've had a lot of residents that, you know, may have been installed under an old standard, as we've been having some of these new cleanouts put in, it's allowed them an opportunity to maintain it they wouldn't have otherwise had. We've also updated easement language. What we wanted to ensure, that there are some instances where we have sewers that end up being a whole lot deeper than it's easy to maintain. So if you have a 20-foot-deep sewer, it's really hard to go in and maintain it with only a 10-foot easement. And so we try to ensure that if we are running a sewer, or a water line, or something else that's not within a normal avenue, haven, or right-of-way, that we had a big enough easement to ensure that we can go in and effectively maintain that. We have some places in the canyon where we're actually battling against this. We'll have our 36-inch water line that have buildings that have built right up and actually into that easement. So as we're going in and trying to replace that, we're experiencing some of those problems and those issues. So we added some language in here to ensure that as we're putting in some of these easements, and as we're getting into some of these, you know, specialty depths or other problem areas, that we will have enough room to maintain our system, but not to be, you know, overly aggressive to say that we need all of this extra land. We just tried to provide a criteria to say, we feel like at, you know, this amount of depth, we need this amount of easement to effectively maintain it. An item that we've done for our storm drain standards is we created a stormwater design manual, and that is something that will be posted on our website. And so we ensured that as people are coming in, doing design not only around our rivers, but in different areas in the downtown, talking about some LID requirements, also inclusive of some of these things, that we're ensured that we're captured and providing as many options as possible to meet our, you know, I'm going to call it our intricate and important downtown landscape. And so as we're getting through some of these requirements, we provided some options in order to help with developers as they're coming in, so they didn't have to take a guess as to some things that we think would work. We would share some of that language and some of that guidance out of the gate and try and help expedite the development process. We've also added some language about state requirements and their dewatering permits. We do have a lot of groundwater, and we just wanted to clarify some of that. And then we've updated some of our stormwater requirements. A lot of that is to be consistent with the state and some of the requirements that they have. And then as we've been improving our models, making sure that we're able to effectively capture the areas that we need to, and continue to reduce flooding in a lot of these different areas that we have. This is a picture of LIA practices. The picture on the left is of Grand Avenue, and that's something successful that we've been able to implement here in Ogden. As you drive up and down Grand Avenue between 20th and 24th, you're able to see some of those trees and plants and other areas that are within that, within the roadway section. Those actually act as some of the storage for some of our stormwater elements. LID is not great everywhere, but we do look for opportunities in places where we could put it. I've seen many different places that have tried to do it in like the center of the road and everything else. I will tell you, with snow plowing operations, we have to be highly sensitive of where we put these, but we try and find and look for opportunities to help us protect the environment and ensure the stuff that we're putting into the river is strictly the stormwater and try and filter everything else out. In our water standards, we made a couple of updates. We wanted to make sure that we had a maximum depth requirement, and that is five and a half feet. We're trying to make sure that if we're digging down to some of these main lines and everything else, that we're able to access them quickly and repair them. Doing so in the winter, I think, becomes difficult, and we want to make sure we have a lot of those items taken care of. I shared a story in the last work session about our pressure and bacteria testing requirements. One of the projects we were on, we had a guy show up with a mop and a bottle of Clorox, and said he was just going to scrub really good in some of our water system. We didn't feel like that was probably appropriate to tie into a city's drinking water system, and so that became a fun argument there for a little bit. But we want you to know that we take anything that goes into our public water system extremely serious. I appreciate Brady Hurd, who's the director of our water utility, making sure that we have these requirements, and backs us up on anything that we need, especially in construction, so that we ensure everything that we connect to our water system is safe, and our residents are protected, but we can continue to move forward with development. So we clarified that you have pressure and bacteria testing are required if you put in 20 feet of mainline or make any connection that's 20 feet in length. We've also updated some lateral installation guides and some of the alignment requirements. You'd be surprised what sort of creative requests that we get for how people want to run a lateral into their development. It makes it incredibly hard to blue-stake, and so we are trying to always update some of those mappings and everything else we can do, but we came up with the lateral installation alignment requirements so that we can just be consistent on what we're requiring for everyone else as we're going forward. One of the big things that I talked about was the engineered plans and updates for the directional bore works. So the good news is, we have a lot of companies that are coming to Ogden that want to provide different fiber and other stuff here in the city. The one item that we wanted to make sure that we were consistent on, and if you remember that section I showed you earlier from the roadway and all of the utilities, is we want to ensure that there's room left, that we can always replace our water lines, our sewer lines. We can always service our residents and make sure that we're not having to go out and buy homes or buy any sort of anything else to get our stuff in. So we have started asking companies to follow up and give us the engineered plans that we need, ensure that we have good drawings so that we can install them, construct them as they're designed, and we don't have to be out there in the field wondering where stuff ended up. We've been following up with design constraints. A lot of those have been related to when they go out and they'll do a pothole in the road. How do they have to restore that pothole, and how does everything go back? And that becomes important, because we don't like to have additional potholes in the road. Our job is, we're trying to get rid of as many as possible, so we don't want people adding new ones. And then some of the other construction restraints. So what you can see is, you have site triangle that we used a lot, I know, in planning and other requirements. One of the things we wanted to make sure of is that they weren't installing a lot of their big facilities or other sort of boxes into some of these corner areas to ensure that we don't have someone pulling up to a stop sign and not being able to see around the corner, or that we're providing any sort of site impairment as people are coming up to some of these different intersections. And so these became important, because if you're running fiber in straight lines, a premium spot that everyone wanted to go was right on the corner, and that became problematic as we started working through. We were able to come up with solutions, but we just wanted to ensure that we were able to let the roads act as safety corridors as much as we could, and not provide anything else extra. That was the majority of everything that we had as far as changes are concerned, as far as the engineering standards. Did you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions to the council members? All right. This is a public input. If there's anybody that would like to speak to this item, please come up to the podium and tell us your name.
I have a question. I don't know if it actually contains, has to do with water standards.
Say your name, please.
Laura Lewis. I wasn't sure if I was staying yet, or if I was going to have to sit back down. I have an issue with the quality of our main water lines running through the city. Is this the place to talk about that, or the next one? The public input?
I think the public comment might be a better place. Okay. Unless, I don't, yeah, the public comment.
It could be there.
I mean, if you want, you're up here. Go ahead.
I don't care where they talk.
Well, just quickly, finish this one.
All right. Well, we'll wait till next time.
I'll get it later.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Seeing no movement on the public input, we do a motion.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt proposal ordinance 2025-7.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, and second by Councilmember Graff. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chuburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer? Vice Chair Hayer.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye. Excuse me, that passes. All right, next is a report from administration. I believe we have Laura Lewis here to talk about the proposed sales tax pledge agreement for the Forest Building. Ah, there you are. I saw you come in.
My name clearly is Laura Lewis. It's good to be with you this evening. As you know, frequently when I show up, I'm here to talk about debt, not always, but frequently. And that is the case tonight. There are two parts. One, the city council will be asked to adopt, I'll be explaining that to you. And then as the redevelopment agency, there'll be a bond parameters resolution that you'll be asked to adopt. In order to acquire the Forest Service Building, which the city seeks to purchase from the federal government, the city needs to finance that acquisition. And so in the RDA meeting, and I'll go over the parameters there as well, in the RDA meeting, you'll be asked to adopt a parameters resolution that I think all of you are quite familiar with. It sets a maximum amount of the bonds that can be issued, the maximum interest rate, that kind of thing. The RDA will be issuing those bonds in order to facilitate much more flexibility under state law in order to sell that property. And if you, if the city sells a property, you, there are a lot of things you have to adhere to relative to making sure you're getting fair market value and blah, blah, blah. Well, when you're doing something for economic development reasons, that's not always plausible, right? If, if the market were able to do that, it would probably do it on its own. And so frequently, not just you, but redevelopment agencies throughout the state buy property to sell it, then maybe add a slight discount or with some economic incentives. And so the RDA will be issuing the bonds, but the tax increment that will be coming out of that project area doesn't quite sync up one-to-one with what will be needed to repay that debt. Using that tax increment and some of the RDA fund balance at the end, it all, you know, should mathematically work out very well. But in order to get the bonds issued, you'll put yourself in the bondholders' position, right? Trust us, the RDA will pay probably isn't a really good way to sell those bonds. So what we're asking the city council to do is adopt a pledge agreement. It's an interlocal pledge agreement, and it sets forth that, you know, if so many, 45 days in advance, that the RDA will notify the city and say, we're not going to have quite enough increment, and therefore the city council, or excuse me, the city would need to pay from its budget from sales tax, will be asked to pledge sales tax to backstop that debt. In that way, the bonds would become ratable. We're going to do the bond issue a different way. This time, we probably won't seek a rating because of the cost, but the bond purchasers will still, you know, identify that it's a very solid risk for them and that you will get a lower interest rate from that proposition. So that's what's in front of you as a city council, is to adopt the interlocal pledge agreement whereby you will effectively backstop the RDA's bond issuance to purchase a Forest Service Building by agreeing to pledge your sales tax.
Questions for Laura? I have a quick question for you.
Yes.
Is this a, a normal process that a city would do? I mean, is this something that cities do all the time?
Yes. So frequently, sort of, you know, regardless of size, I mean, it's something Ogden has done before, but I can whip off examples in West Valley and South Jordan and Orem. I mean, I could, you know, probably go on and on. You don't want me to go on and on, but cities do that all the time because there's typically a mismatch between, so when you think of economic development, right, you're taking a piece of property that right now isn't on the books for, I mean, speaking specifically of the Forest Service Building, it's on the books is practically zero, right? So you're not getting any tax increment off of that. But there has to be time that goes by to allow something to happen with that building, right, for it to get refurbished and released and, you know, generating a taxable value off of which taxes are collected. And there's a mismatch in that timing. And so cities seek to, you know, make sure that their cities stay economically vibrant. And so, again, this is a mechanism we use, you know, kind of time after time. They could pledge just their franchise taxes, they could pledge just sales taxes, they could pledge both to backstop that. So it is a frequent practice, again, in order to get the interest rate down, so you're able to leverage that tax increment as much as you can.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. It's a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. So this is the motion to adopt proposal resolution 2025-4, authorizing and approving.
This isn't a public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It is not.
Go ahead.
And setting the public hearing.
Adopting and setting.
I'm sorry, that's what I was trying to get to. Yeah, adopting and setting a public hearing for March 18th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Chuburka. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chuburka.
Aye.
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Myers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Aye.
Councilmember Blair.
Aye.
Vice Chair Hayer.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye, that passes. Thank you.
And Councilmember Ritchie, I apologize, I should have mentioned that it did require the setting of a public hearing because you are pledging your sales tax. So thank you, sorry for that.
And that public hearing will be set for March 18th.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is public comments. If you have a comment, please go to the, come up to the podium and state your name. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, I'm Sarge Mori Ali, and first of all, I'd like to thank you guys, all the way up to the mayor, for the wonderful job you do, and I really hope you guys enjoyed your Christmas cards.
Thank you.
Now, we've still got an issue over on 29th and Polk, and roughly two weeks ago, we had a major accident over there involving two vehicles, and a lot of it was, there's no four-way stop there. Two of the vehicles landed in neighbors' yards just west of Polk on the north side of the street, not far from the two families' front porches. It's getting very dangerous over there. I've talked with our police chief, who went bye-bye, and I'll, and he's doing everything he can to try and bring the speed down, but honestly, what we need to do is have a four-way stop there. And I highly recommend of two four-way stops within two blocks of every school. That'll keep things slow. We've got a four-way stop there on Tyler and 29th. People are running that, not stopping, know nothing. And a lot of the neighbors on 29th Street are super irritated, and they literally told me, Sarge, if you don't try and do something, we will. And I figure I can handle it a whole lot calmer and all than they could right now. That's how pissed off they are. So we need to get something done. And then a couple visits ago, the, the mayor actually was talking about something, and I highly recommend it, and a lot of the people I've talked to are all for it. We need to bring the speed limit down in Ogden, Utah. Bring it down to 25. You can be there on Washington, you got people flying through, same up on Harrison, same over on Wall. And we have too many people who don't care about the safety of others, and also something needs to be done to protect the residents here in Ogden. And I'll, and I will do everything, I've already gone as far as to purchase two poles and two stop signs for 29th and Polk. And all, and you guys know me well enough, if I talk to you guys and nothing gets done, i.e. like with the street repair and whatnot, well, guess what? I'm going to do the repairs with concrete and things, and guess who gets hit with the And all, and then, again, I totally appreciate everything you guys are doing, and we need to focus on two important jobs here in the city of Ogden. That's firefighters and police officers. We need to have higher pay for them, and we need to make sure they have the needed necessities so they can take care of the health issues, especially our firefighters. Cancer runs so rampant with our firefighters because of everything they respond to and whatnot.
Thanks, Sarge.
And we need to get our firefighters and police officers higher pay and better benefits.
Thanks, Sarge.
I do. Are you pushing me up there before I ready? Okay. Laura Lewis, I just want to talk about the current water supply lines in Ogden City. I happen to live on a street where we are constantly having problems with dirty water. They're always digging it up, and that water ends up in my house. And there was a main line that broke just up the street this week. My water has never been as dirty as it was. It was almost like mud. And I went up and spoke with them and asked them if they would flush that line with the fire hydrants, and they said they would. I called the city about it, the water department, saying, yeah, we, we will flush those. Well, nobody did. And my water still hasn't cleared out, and it's been almost a week. And that builds up in our water heaters and causes them to fail prematurely. So, that said, what are the plans in the future for upgrading our older water main supply lines in the city? We're doing a lot for all the new construction, but what are we doing for the people who've lived here a long time and would like the same water quality as the people who are getting the new lines? Thank you.
I'm from the Utah Office of State Treasurer, but I'm actually supposed to be Councilmember Thompson, but I came here to talk to you guys tonight. With my partner, where'd you go? So this is my partner on the Financial Literacy Awareness Committee, Jamie Wadman, and we're just here to ask for your consideration to pass a resolution, as we did in Clearfield City, to recognize April as Financial Literacy Awareness Month. Just to take a moment to talk about financial literacy in the state of Utah, we all know about the K-12 requirement where our students are supposed to be understanding finance and how to get by, but the reality is what we're finding in Utah is that, at least according to a recent article released about, we have the fourth-most amount of household debt in the nation. I think that's quite stark, but I would say for the Ogden-Clearfield metro, we should be quite proud because we have the least amount of income inequality. So the reality is, is that we want to keep eradicating poverty, and the only way we can do that is letting people know that adults right now who didn't get this, that financial literacy is real, and that we are here to try to help them get that message. Currently, right now, at the office, I'm working on a virtual toolkit to try to inform citizens about what financial literacy initiatives are out there, what information they can gather. But cities are the engine. Without you guys, we can't get these messages across because, just like this beautiful lady talked about water, people come to you guys as leaders. And so my plea here is just to take that time and let you guys know that if you pass that Financial Literacy Awareness proclamation, of course, we'd come and celebrate you guys, but more so, we would do whatever we can to help you guys get those messages out to your residents so they can be literate, so they can understand debt, management, credit, investing, and things of that nature. Do you have anything to say? Yeah?
So my name is Jamie Wadman. I'm here with Path Forward Utah. I'm also from Pleasant View. I grew up here 13 years. My family's been a big part of the Ogden community, and we actually, one of the reasons that I, it's passionate to me is because, you know, just my daughter, just recognizing as she's just gone into her 22nd year, how little that she knew. The information, the toolkits that we hope to put together has even been helpful for me to look over. And I think that, you know, getting this information to people like the Marshall Whites and people that really may need this information in, in Ogden City would just be really beneficial. And you're not the only city that we've promoted this.
Proclamation.
Yeah, proclamation either. So thank you for your time.
And so I'll just say, and put on my councilmember hat, the reality is, is that thank you guys for all you do. I understand how hard it is to sit in that seat, and I will say, this is a portlady, nothing keeps me up more at night than water. So with that said, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you guys in Ogden. If you guys have any, any questions, please feel free to contact the treasurer's office. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, and your honor. The timeline that you discussed earlier about the Aspen project just may not work for us, but we're running out of time very, very quickly, and I'm really concerned about what's happening. There are three of you who've indicated support for what we're trying to do, four of you have not. I wish we had four votes, but apparently we don't. We're having a Weber Human Services meeting on Friday, and we'll discuss whether or not this timeline works for us at all. Your job is to enhance the economic viability of Ogden. That's a very good goal. Our job is to find housing for the homeless people in our community as expeditiously as we possibly can, and we will move forward with that goal in whatever way we possibly can. Thank you for all the time you've spent considering these issues, but we need to move ahead, and we need to move ahead very quickly. Thank you.
Okay, Bob, will you state your name real quick for the record?
I'm sorry?
We, we know who you are, but will you state the, your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I said, Robert Hunter, and I live in Ogden. Thank you.
Following those comments is perfect for me. My name's Annie Dunaway. It's been a long day, so I'm going to ask you to think fast and listen quick one more time. In this city, we are so lucky to have so much to celebrate. I get to sit here tonight with a group of elected city leaders who are committed to doing their best for people. Together, we got to celebrate a single community member's commitment and passionate commitment to our community and its development. And what a perfect night to really hone in on why I'm here. This city's pattern of ignorance over community and social development project components leads to eventual lambasting of these projects. And that established pattern of broadsight in community development projects leads to community development projects being sunk into the murky waters of our city's economic opportunities. I'm here today to urge Ogden City Government to take a long look at their obligation to let community development leaders do the leading, and you do what government does, protect our ability in those pursuits. Thank you.
Kevin Lundell, Ogden City resident. I'd like to comment about the update we just heard on the Weber Housing Authority project. Is the plan really that we are going to spend millions of taxpayer dollars to purchase property from Weber Housing Authority simply so that we can prevent disabled homeless individuals from being housed in permanent supportive housing that the neighborhood supports? Is that the plan? Doesn't seem like a very good one. We had an entire month on a time-sensitive project for a report to be, to the council that was basically nothing. We didn't hear much today. I'm floored that what we saw today couldn't have been communicated directly to the council in an email, and that further action could have been taken today, and that we could have been informed, and that this project could have been moved ahead. I heard the mayor mention about getting an extension on funding through the state legislature. That session ends March 7th, and they are considering a record number of bills. I have my doubts that that's a viable option. I also heard a lot of talk about what this, what was going to happen to this project if the council wasn't known. None of the citizens of Ogden know if the council isn't known yet on this project because we haven't heard of a vote on it. Lastly, there was a public comment made a few weeks ago about the good landlord program, that it is the policy that in order to get a discount on a business license, landlords are to not rent to anyone with a drug offense. I want to know if that is in. I want to know if that is indeed the policy of the Good Landlord Program. Furthermore, Councilmember Hare and Mayor Nadolsky agreed that the Aspen facility flies in the face of the Good Landlord Program because of that specific policy. I want to know if that is true. Is it the city's policy that we don't rent to recovering addicts, either privately or publicly? I have family members, personal family members, who have been affected by the opioid crisis in this country. We can't say on one hand that we are concerned about fentanyl and opioids in our city and then abandon those that have fallen victim to them. I'm concerned about that particular policy and about this project not going forward. There's been a lot of time and effort put into this. And I think the citizens in the neighborhood need to know where the council stands, and we need to know what the plan is actually going to do to not lose these funds and to get people housed and do it in the timeline that needs to get done. Thanks.
We have a hand online. Let's go to Heath Sato.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I'm kind of at a loss tonight. I was hoping there would be something presented while we waited all this time for the Aspen House presentation and maybe get some leadership on this. With all due respect, it felt like a kid showing up to do the book report and said, well, it could be about a lot of things. I'd like you all to read the book and tell me your thoughts. I'm completely at a loss why we're kicking this can down the road, again, why this wasn't discussed with the council sooner, where you guys were at. The council's known, and the city's known about this for years. And as best as I can understand is that our city attorney didn't understand the laws around this enough to throw up these red flags about the city needing to approve it a long time ago. So, somebody figured that out and threw that monkey wrench in the works right at the last minute here where we're all scrambling for a solution. I think Ogden failed as a government, and we need to allow the county to move forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Heath.
Hi, I'm Brooke Barrigan, Ogden City resident. Earlier today, I was going over the, I don't know if it's a memo, I don't know what you call these, but it was the request to be on the agenda this evening. And the notes from the January 14th meeting says that the mayor indicated, I'm not sure if he's paying attention right now, but the mayor indicated that the administrative staff had made some progress on finding another location but needed additional time. No details there. Then again, on January 21st, the administration, I printed it so small, the administration agreed to provide a progress report on efforts to find alternative site for permanent supportive housing, dah 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 dah. Anyway, we all came here tonight expecting a progress report, and we got nothing, to Heath's point and to Kevin's point. I can't believe we waited this long. Like, my kids did a little drive because we were waiting a month before now for blankets and coats, and we brought them over to Andy's office because we're worried about what's happening in the meantime. And so, you're telling me we waited a month for the mayor to not say anything at all? He said nothing. Like, how are the offers that he's made to buy the property not part of the progress report? So, I'm here to say, he can't look at me because he knows. He knows. He knows. But I'm here to say that this is, I kind of hate to echo what Heath said, but we're failing. We're failing, and we need to do something. Inaction is action in that it's you're actively leaving these disabled homeless folks out in the cold. You're actively doing that by not taking action. Thank you.
Brandon, can you move that down a little? I can't see if there's others on, or they would come up to the top?
They'd come to the top.
Anyone else? All right. Let's go through these and respond really quickly. Mayor, I'll turn to you and/or, I see Justin's still here, or someone, I'm assuming you've been working with Sarge to find out what the speed limit is and the issues are on 29th and Polk. Sorry, I'm looking at Justin. Justin's waving his head.
I was just going to say, I know, Sarge, thanks for the Christmas cards. Appreciate them. And Sarge has also talked with Justin Anderson. If you could continue that conversation afterward, that'd be helpful for me as well.
Also, can you address the dirty water line? First, let me just say that we have a lot of very old water pipes, and we have a huge issue as far as being able to fund and replace those. And they are in a continuous, continual capital improvement project line item, and so there's just a lot of them. So, if you could address just her specific issue, that would be great.
I was just going to offer, if you give me that address, we'll make sure it gets done.
You're going to come and question?
I don't know how, but I know people that do.
Laura does live in my district, and I can back her up that there are some pretty rough places, and Justin is well aware. I mean, this is not news to the Public Works Department. But if you would hang around just a minute after, I want to chat with you, and I'll, okay, thank you.
Chair, can I just also mention, I talked to Justin about this issue just between the work session and this meeting, and he shared some information I thought was valuable in that as we're working on replacing the water line, we're really not drawing any water from the wells at this point like we normally would at this time of year. So, it's all coming through the treatment facility. And so, based on that water and the mineral components and all the scientific stuff, the water temperature even, is part of the reason why some of that water is maybe a little bit different than it normally is, but it's still safe, it's still being tested. So, yeah, that's.
This is from construction work they do.
And, yeah, obviously, there's still construction work as well going on, and line breaks happening as well. But anyway, I just thought that was interesting, that there are more than just, you know, there are some, you know, different factors that are at play with the water.
And then, Councilmember Thompson and Jamie, thank you. I would like to know a little bit more about that and the resolution you did pass in Clearfield. Is that what you, yeah. So, that would be great if I can reach out to you and get that, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I'd second that, Chair. The curriculum around personal financial literacy is really important in a complicated world, and people can find themselves on their back foot very quickly if they aren't smart about how they manage their household and personal finances. So, yeah, I would support anything that we can do to bring that kind of curriculum to Ogden City. Thank you.
I'd also just weigh in on that. I think it's great, I volunteered with Junior Achievement to do financial literacy classes in high schools, and it's just a great opportunity to do that education. We also have a great resource in our community, my hometown Ogden Resource Centers, they do financial literacy classes as well. So, there are a lot of opportunities, and, yeah, we just need to shine a big light on it and show all the opportunities that are out there for people to get that.
And thank you all for the comments that you've made on the Weber Housing project. I know that it seems like this has been going on for years, but in all honesty, it was very new to us, even just even a month ago. So, we are trying our best to understand and gather information, and what happens, it just doesn't happen quickly. I understand that. And as much as everyone that came and spoke about wanting that to happen, I've had a few people already reach out and are very fearful that it's going to happen. So, I just want you to know that there's both sides to the coin that we're all trying to weigh in as well. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Comments from the mayor?
Just want to add to the response that it's, if we were to purchase the property, it would be consistent with the policies and approach of the good, of our neighborhood stabilization efforts. It would be, it's not a property we had considered in the past, but purchasing it and alternatively providing opportunities for ownership, much to the, like the project that Mr. Lundell lives in. That's something that we could do at this location, if that's something the council wishes to do. And to Brooke's comments, I was basing my responses today on the options that were provided to me by the housing authority in the meeting that I mentioned, and also trying to be pretty differential, deferential, I should say, to the council's authority around the budget. If I was not thorough enough for some people's likings, my apologies, but I am trying not to overstep my bounds. I also want to say that there are a number of people that reached out to me and on behalf of a number of people who told me that they are scared to comment publicly because they don't want to be chastised the way that others are being chastised, including us, by some of the neighborhood. And those are people directly in the neighborhood telling us, without coming forward publicly, that they do not support the project, they have great concerns around the project, and they're very thankful for the work that we're doing so far to try and evaluate alternatives. I'll also point out that I'm doing my best to make sure that we land in a place that is helpful as fast as possible, that, like I said in my remarks, I don't think just saying no is a good conclusion. I think that if the answer is no, it should be but, and we can provide some help and some support. I do hope that we can move as expeditiously as possible. That has been my commitment all along, and I'm doing my best to uphold that. It has not been an easy thing to do, and I do wish we had known about the law sooner. If we had, we would know that the law was there for a reason, that it needs to be followed, that it hasn't always been followed by all parties, and that that is something that we plan to ensure moving forward so that we are not in this situation in the future. And I don't think that the city should be completely blamed for that. Thank you.
Councilmember comments?
Chair, was there, Annie Dunaway had some comments, and I think I understand what they're around, but if there was anybody else that was on the same page with Annie that could comment on her situation and her comments?
I'll just say that we have given her the Silver Glove treatment the best we can. Mara and I both trying our best to help. If there's more that we can do, absolutely let us know. We'll do what we can to be helpful. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Any other comments? All right. You move.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Myers, to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, geez.
Geez.
All right. A little rusty on that one.
That was a little rough.
Geez, I know. We're getting ready on a.
We do have another meeting. We're getting ready to start, so if you do want to chat, if you'd kind of go out into the foyer, please.
We have another meeting right now. Yes.
They have the capacity financially to support. And I did send an email back.
All right.
Okay, sorry, I missed a question.
Hello, how are you? Oh, for me? Oh, thank you.
All right, let's get started on our next meeting.
Thank you.
Can we get started on our next meeting, please?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Bye. Thanks for coming.
We have another meeting.
Yeah, just get it, that'll be fine.
And I'm sorry I'm pushing people out, but we have someone we're going to talk to on the East Coast, so.
Yeah, depending on if they have capacity, yeah.
If they've got capacity, is there any reason why we can't support?
I'd gavel again.
Hey, do it quick. Yo, we got another meeting. All right, we're going to get started, Mayor. All right, welcome to the Special Redevelopment Agency meeting of February 18th, 2025. Please note that all board members are president, president, present, geez. All right, first up is a report from an administration on the proposed tax increment revenue bond parameters. Laura Lewis. Laura? Can you hear me? Laura Lewis, please welcome to the stand. I'm wondering if the microphone is on.
Or is she awake?
Laura Lewis.
Okay. Now, I had this all pulled up on my screen. Well, I'm going to go from memory. There we go. Ha, there it is. Guess what this is to talk about? The debt that we're asking the RDA to pass a parameters resolution for. A couple of things to note, different than what we normally do because of the need for flexibility. So, when you sell this building, you're going to want to use those proceeds, however much they are, to pay down a portion of the debt. We all reasonably expect that it will not be for the full amount of the debt. So, we need to have some sort of mechanism where we can say to the bondholders, okay, we owe you $4 million, but here's a million two, and pay that down today so we get that interest expense lowered. That is not standard in your typical bond world. People buy fixed income because they want fixed income, they want to know when it's going to pay, they want to know when it's going to get called, et cetera, et cetera. So, instead of doing a traditional public offering, which you're used to with the bonds that we typically do for water, sewer, Wonder Block, whatever, this will be what we refer to as a direct purchase or a private placement. The process is still competitive in nature in that we will put together a term sheet working with your staff. We have a draft prepared, I'm going to go over it later tonight, and then we'll get other information after they review it. We'll send that out likely to, you know, several banks. I expect we'll send it to 10 or 12, expect, you know, four or five responses. That will vary in terms of interest rate, their call flexibility, whatever, we'll compare those and choose the option that is best and most meets your needs. There's a chance, and the resolutions allow, you know, that we could do either or. So, let's say we send it out, the banks are all skittish because they don't want to buy bonds right now, whatever. There's a chance that that may happen. It doesn't happen very often, but we've preserved the ability to still do a public offering if we run into that scenario. The parameters resolution, you're very familiar with, it's very similar to all the other parameters resolution regardless of how we're going to issue the bonds. The maximum amount of the debt will not exceed 4.4 million, not more than 16 years, not more than a 3% discount, and not more than a 5% interest rate. The expected amount will be, you know, lower than 4.4 million. We expect to amortize it over 10 or 11 years, and I'm hoping that the interest rate will be below 5%. I will tell you that the market's not great. It's not awful. Tax-exempt yields went down somewhere one or two basis points today, but taxable's went up. And typically, you know, they don't move in lockstep, but they do. up and typically, you know, they'll, they don't move in lockstep, but they do tend to move together. So I'm hoping I've left enough headroom in that because this rate is stated in the, the resolution that you just adopted as well. If we are in the market today, I would expect based on where the Thompson Reuters municipal market data yields are, I would expect that you would be like a 4.3-ish to 4.5. So there's some headroom in there, but I need you to be aware of that. As in other resolutions, other parameters resolutions, this sets forth designated officers in the next to last whereas clause that once you adopted this resolution with those stated parameters that I've just given you, we won't have to come back to this RDA board for any future approval. You instead are granting, I will read it so you know who has to be on there. The board desires to grant to a committee of at least any four of the following seven. The agency executive director or his or her designee, the chair and vice chair of the board or their designees, the city council's executive director or designee, the chief, city chief administrative officer, the management services director and the city treasurer, provided that at least two of the four have to be from the chair or vice chair of the board or their designees. So it's not like we can just go run amok and, and issue bonds at 10% and hope you're all happy. We have to stay within those parameters. You have some weighing in, in, in that final, the final way that that gets done. Again, this will be different. Those of you that have sat in on pricing committees before, this won't entail that. It will entail, here are the bids we got, here's one I'm recommending to you and then you will make the determination of yea or nay and we will proceed ahead. And with that, I will take any additional questions.
Any questions for?
Chair, just one, Laura, you rattled off not to exceed 4.4 million, not to exceed 16 years, not to exceed 5%. And then you mentioned discount rate. Can you help me understand what that is?
Yes, absolutely. So anyone who wants financial literacy credit, oh, they've all left. My kids tell me I should have been a stand-up comedian. Some days they think I'm funny. So it's a really good question because municipal bonds are the only financial instrument where there is a disconnect sometimes between the price and the yield and the coupon on that bond. So the best way that I have found over my 35 years of explaining this to people is think of, if you are the bond purchaser, so you're, you're not gonna be on the city council, you're gonna buy a bond, right? So on that bond, in the old days, when I started this, we actually had printed bond certificates. Now it's all done electronically. Think of your printed bond certificate and on it, there is a gigantic amount of legalese. What you really care about are three things. The date that that bond is due, meaning when you're gonna get the payment, the principal amount that's stated on that bond, because that's a principal amount that you're gonna get, and the interest rate or the coupon rate, coupon, not yield. The coupon rate on those, on that bond. So those are three things that are gonna be printed on that certificate. Let's call it $5,000, let's call it 5% and then it's due in five years. Lucky number five. So if that rate on that bond is 5%, because that's a coupon you want, you will do the math, you'll, 5,000 times 5%, that's $250. You'll get that divided in two, you'll get it every six months. So you get $250 every six months until a maturity date, you will get $5,000 as the bond purchaser. Now comes the, oh, here comes the municipal advisor that says, "Well, that's a great Commissioner Graff that you want," or Councilmember Graff, "that you want 5% interest or 5% coupon rate, but that's not the market rate for that bond." The real market rate is 4%, but you're still gonna have this piece of paper, we're gonna pay you $5,000, 5% on that $5,000 until it's due. So the adjustment is made in the price at which we sell it to you. So that's the discount, okay? So I don't have exact, you know, mathematical instantaneous to say the dollar price would be X, but we do the math and, and in my made up example that is not going to equal the 3% discount, you would maybe buy that bond for $4,987, whatever it was, right? So that's the discount amount. Chances are with a direct purchase that they'll buy them at par, meaning it'll, you'll buy for 5,000, we'll pay 5,000, but if we go to the public markets, it is likely to have a discount feature built in because that payment of that full par amount is treated differently for tax purposes than otherwise. So when they go to trade the bond, I am not going to even attempt to delineate the tax treatment is different, but that's why it's done.
Thank you. You resurrected the weakest chapters in my corporate finance classes during my college career. And I'm gonna probably not sleep very well tonight, thanks.
If you need to sleep, you just read the bond documents. I'll knock off like.
All right, other questions?
Now they're afraid. Oh my gosh, she's gonna teach us.
All right, this is, yeah, ready for a motion.
I'm the motion man tonight, so I'm gonna propose, motion to adopt proposed resolution 2025-1.
I'll second.
We have a motion by board member Ritchie and second by board member Graff. This is a roll call vote.
Board member Graff?
Aye.
Board member Myers?
Aye.
Board member Ritchie?
Aye.
Board member Blair?
Aye.
Board member Chaburka?
Aye.
Vice chair Hare?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think you should be a comedian.
I do too.
Nobody's cornered the market.
I mean, you are a comedian, but you should also do it. Yeah, it would be so great.
Comments from the executive director?
None, thanks.
Comments from board members? All right.
Chair, make a motion that we move into closed session for one of the seven items listed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by vice chair Hare, second by board member Blair to move into a closed session. This is a roll call vote as well.
Board member Myers?
Aye.
Board member Ritchie?
Aye.
Board member Blair?
Aye.
Board member Chaburka?
Aye.
Board member Graff?
Aye.
Vice chair Hare?
Aye.
Chair White?
Aye, that passes. We'll be adjourning from inside the work session.